To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Officially call the meeting to order at 6:59. In the event of an emergency, we have doors on both sides of the room and there are, if you exit that way and turn right, the main entrance of the building, if you exit.
So if you just, a little exercise for me, so if the board will just close your eyes. You trust me? All right, I want you to picture when you first took your board seats. And I want to picture, I want you to picture what your boardroom look like. Can you picture it? I want you to picture the work you were doing for the financial health of this district. Can you picture it? Okay, you can open your eyes. Now, one of the neat things that we were recognized for this past month was a high-performance high school. So what I'd like us to do at this segment of our board meetings from here on, Collins has a saying that good is the enemy of great. And I've talked to our staff about that a lot, and I think I've shared that with the board. So no longer are we going to title 2.4 Good News from here on out. Mrs. Bond and I have talked about this being Great News. So hopefully, when you had your eyes closed, you were picturing the fact that there are some great things going on in our district. And there's a lot of great people in this district that are doing some really amazing things. We've got some teachers sitting out here. I'm looking at a couple of them. They're going to present tonight. We've got some maintenance folks that are putting in a lot of hard work for us, administrators. So hopefully, it puts a smile to your face when you're picturing some of those things. So, Mrs. Bond, if you take over.
All right, very good. As Dr. Robbins said, the Indiana Department of Education and the Office of School Accountability and Accreditation awarded the Mount Vernon High School the status of a performance-qualified high school for the 2018-2019 school year. That is no easy feat to get, so it's quite an honor. And then in regards to a statewide competition, if you will, we've had several of our winter sports achieve quite a bit in the statewide accolades here. The gold intensity dance team at Mount Vernon High School won first in state for Palm Varsity Winter Guard is qualified to compete in state. And then also our jazz combo jazz band and clarinet choir received gold ratings along with many, many soloists as well. Also wanted to share Carly Williams at Mount Vernon High School has earned a National Merit Scholarship finalist, which is amazing. So there are many, many more accolades, notable philanthropic and community connections listed in your report that's in your packet, so.
Very good. Thank you. At this time, if we have any patrons that are with us tonight that would like to address anything that's on our board agenda, we'd be happy to have you come to the mic and address anything that you'd like to share with us. No comments? Well, thank you all for being here. We're so glad that you're spending your Monday evening with us. Item 3.0 is our consent agenda. Items have been uploaded into your docket. Everyone's had time to review. I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda items. Any discussion?
I do have a question on one of the travel requests. And I ask it in my document that we shared, but on the Montreal trip, what's the expense related? Do we know the expense related with that yet?
We're working on that. What I'd say to you, we're trying to put something as economically feasible together as we can. Originally, we looked at driving a minibus up. And a lot of it's just going to depend on how many students or teachers would opt to do that. You know, right, you can get an airline ticket right now for $325. And if you split out a room by four, it's $50 a night per person. And then you have meal costs and things like that. We do have a dollar amount of about $750 for four or five days, but we're going to float that out there and then see the stream and how, what kind of response we get. And then that'll tell us just what we have to put together to get that together. It's the only way, I've done these many times, it's the only way you can do because if there aren't people interested, you don't have an issue. And if there's thirty people interested, then, you know, I can tell you, that's been our plan, at least get something going, get it on the books, and get the kids that are in grade class, the ones that want to go up and see Montreal and Quebec City. We have a bus, if we land up there, then we have to have transportation around, which is going to be Uber or it's going to be public transportation. So the bus ticket from Montreal to Quebec in round trip's about $75, $85.
So do we have an amount, but if it goes over that amount, you'll cut it off?
Well, you know, we're going to see how many people are interested in the amount we have. And if it got up to $1,000, yeah, we'd probably have to take a look at it and do it at the same time.
Okay, all right.
Right now, we're shooting for that $750 figure, is what I'm going to say.
$750 total or per person?
Per person.
Quebec City's a beautiful place, and it's a lot, you know, it's just a very quaint, old-style city. And it'd be a nice place where kids could get their practice and work.
What are we approving tonight, then?
Just that they can go.
Approving the trip?
But if we don't know the details of the trip, then what are we approving?
Well, with your permission to proceed.
Proceed.
Permission to go there if we're able to secure. We'll come back with the figures and things for you, but we can't plan if the board would say, you know, we don't want you to go to Montreal, then that is an answer.
So we'll see the final numbers and everything before it's finalized. Okay, very good. Any other questions?
I don't have any. My other ones were answered in the...
Got a motion by Tony and second by Kelly. All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries. We have our school board members' report. Mount Vernon Education Foundation is, it's Beth now, it's Beth Smith.
It is. And so the meeting this month was canceled, but if you haven't purchased your ticket for the gala, if you're still early bird, so you save some money, well, actually, you get free parking and some other little goodies. So please consider being a part of the gala on April 14th, our first gala.
Very good. And Mike McCarty is on his way back from Brazil, so he's not able to present the Hancock County RDC. But he did send all of us updates today on what they have going. I'd be happy to share just a few of those with you tonight. Mount Comfort RV is looking for an expansion and a tax abatement. And it's, could impact our tax revenue to the school by at least $60,000 per year. So that's a great thing for Mount Vernon schools. And could potentially bring a lot of employment to our school district as well, so we're excited about that. Skip with the Hancock County RDC would like to attend our April meeting to discuss ideas for school funding and be a part of that with us. And so we'll be glad to have him with us at our April meeting. There's another company that's moving into a location that was vacated by Celadon, so that building will be, continue to be occupied and hopefully expand our growth. So that's great that we don't have a large vacant business in our school district as well. So those are kind of Mike's notes from the Hancock County RDC. And then Fortville RDC is Tony May.
The Fortville RDC didn't meet.
I want that one.
That's all I have.
And Kelly with Cumberland.
We did meet.
Wow!
I think we haven't met for probably almost a year. Basically, we just did our sport training, we kind of like to do here. And they did say that Cumberland doesn't have TIF, they don't have money, so we don't really have much to do when we meet. But they did say there's been a lot of interest along 40 of businesses. And they did say they would make sure they work with the schools to make sure the funding is beneficial to us. And there is some interest in housing, but it's in the New Palace District right now, that's I know. And that was, that's really it.
Very good. McCordsville did meet, and we have been continuing to work with Veritas on what a town center plan would look like for the town of McCordsville. And so much of our meetings in this next year are going to be revolved around that. But did set a calendar schedule to start meeting with land stakeholders that it would involve. And so that's when it'll get really fun and kind of interesting. But it's been neat to see that process come together as an RDC. And the town council has approved what we have done so far. So we've got their stamp and their approval to move forward with those stakeholder meetings. So that's kind of exciting. Dr. Robbins?
Well, thank you. I want to start out tonight, we have a few items on the superintendent's report. But first of all, I want to thank Chief and Lieutenant Ratten for being here with us tonight. The biggest thing, obviously, is safety. You know, it's been in the forefront of all of our minds. And so that's the first thing I want to discuss tonight. Just from my piece of the safety update, you know, I shared with the board a little bit in our executive session. But one of the things that we have discussed with our safety team, our building principals, we just recently did a complete walkthrough of the perimeters with the Fortville Police Department. And, you know, I just really want to appreciate them for dedicating an entire morning with us. But, you know, there are really a couple different areas that we want to look at. But the first thing is just making sure we're following our own protocols. You know, Mr. Shelton, who is really kind of heading up our entire district's safety team. But that's the first and foremost thing we need to do. But we're looking at primary, secondary, tertiary opportunities to improve. But, you know, the iloveyouguys.org organization is one that will help us really standardize the way we do things. And our building principals have all been through the safety training. We have eight certified school safety specialists in our district, me included, Mr. Shelton included, which allows us to have a pretty good insight on the things we can do and work really closely with the Fortville Police Department. But if you look up there, I wanted to put in what I think is some things that are probably really pertinent, and it is just really four simple things to remember. And it's the lockout, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter protocols that our staff is trained on every single year. And again, just doing the simple little things is going to be the first and foremost important thing for us to do. And we saw some things that we just aren't doing ourselves that will help us. But again, gentlemen, I appreciate you being here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Chief, because we have some exciting opportunities, I think, hopefully in the future that will allow us to partner even closer together. So Chief, if you wouldn't mind talking to the board a little bit with some things we discussed, that'd be great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Under Dr. Robbins' new 2.4, I think we have some great news. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Shelton, Mr. Long, and Mr. Robbins for spending the time with Major Ratten and Major Shelley this past week. They did the threat assessment. I think they went to every, every school on campus, identified some weak areas, and also identified some strong, some strong things, too. So I think that with the assistance of the principals and the administration, that we're going to be really comfortable that the school's in good hands when it comes to safety. So, and we'll continue to collaborate with each other. We have a very good working relationship with the Mount Vernon Community School Corporation. And we think we're going to continue to foster that. And as long as we continue to have great communication, which we've had in the five years that I've been here, this is just going to get stronger. So with that being said, and if you have any questions on the threat assessment that was done with Major Ratten, I drug him along with me tonight because I wasn't there and he was. So Major Ratten currently coordinates all the security for the school now with the school officers, with the officers at the alternative school and the high school. So whenever there's an issue with the, with the schedule or the security, then I always turn to him because he does it. I also wanted to recognize Bob Sterrett tonight. Bob Sterrett is our newest member of our town council. And I brought him along in case any of the board members had any questions that maybe he could answer from the council's perspective regarding the SRO program. So hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to read the MOU. I wanted to let the board members know that I have approval or permission to move ahead from our council that was received last night. Once I get approval on the MOU from Dr. Robbins or the board or whoever, then we will go ahead and proceed with the SRO position. Now, this is going to entitle us hiring an additional officer, obviously, and another vehicle. Time is of the essence if we want to get this done by July 30th or 31st of the next year. If we, once we do a hiring process that we're in now, we still have to send a person to the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy for 16 weeks. We are definitely going to send them to the SRO. They will become a member of the National SRO Association, and we want to get them through the Safe Schools Program. So that's where we're at. I'm basically here to answer any questions you may have regarding the MOU or anything that I can answer on behalf of the Police Department or the town council.
Well, I will answer up real quick so they don't look really dumbfounded. I have the MOU. They don't have a copy of the MOU. I just discussed it with them in our executive session. So don't feel like you, you're like, what is he talking about? So I kind of just briefly, I described it to you, what it is. But I have a copy of it in my office.
And I'm sure you dealt with them in the past.
Yeah, absolutely. So.
Okay, you went through several detailed things that we're looking at doing. Are we going to get kind of regular updates as to what's?
Absolutely. You sure will. Yeah.
And part of that, Mr. May, if I can, is the, if required or requested by Dr. Robbins, that our SRO officer will be present at the, at the school board meetings.
That's great.
For questions.
Dr. Long?
Yeah, I'd just like to publicly say, Chief, I've been in a lot of different school districts and a lot of different towns in Indiana. I was raised here, but I've never been with a finer group of guys than your staff.
Thank you.
You know, you always hear the other side of it, but friendly, you know, outgoing, willing to help in any way you can. And I'll tell you, I feel safe when I'm around you. So I just want to publicly tell you that. And I hope the board knows how hard these guys, they're here before anybody gets here, and they're here after anybody leaves, and they're checking doors. And so I just want to publicly tell you, I'm really impressed with you and your whole staff.
I appreciate that. I'd like to say I'm holding their feet to the fire, but it's not. They do it on their own. It's something they, they love to do.
You know, Matt Moss is a tremendous young man. He's worked really hard, and he goes everywhere just to help people. And, you know, I think what you are are a model to kids. They feel like policemen are good people.
Well, and I'm glad, and we are. You know, we have a great, we have a great relationship with the school. And, you know, I said at the chief's desk, but I can't take credit for all of it. A lot of it's Major Ratten and the officers that come out here. So I will certainly pass that message on to them.
Chief, before, I demoted you. I'm a military guy, so I know how that feels. I know him as Lieutenant Ratten. Sorry, Major Ratten.
I was going to reduce his pay tomorrow. He gave me a favor.
All right.
Right.
Why didn't you say something to me?
Let the minutes reflect, right?
I have, I have two assistant chiefs, basically, Major Ratten and Major Shelley. One is in charge of law enforcement operations, and one is in charge of operations. So that's Major Ratten, so.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Dr. Robbins explained that the SRO will be mostly at the high school and the middle school. But where I teach, sometimes the SRO goes to the elementary with, if they, it's very rare. But if needed, would they go to the elementary if there was something going on?
In, in McCordsville?
Fortville.
Or in Fortville, okay. Yeah, they'll go, one of the, one of the key elements with this is going to be the communication. This SRO position will work directly with Derek Shelton, who's kind of headed up the safety, the safety part of it. But it's going to be a big collaborative effort with the principals of the schools, with Mr. Shelton. His, the primary responsibility, and I tried to explain this, if, if there's an SRO officer at the school and we have a robbery at the bank or something, that SRO officer stays at the school. Okay? If we got to call people in to handle something else, then we'll do that. Now, if it's a natural disaster or something where we got to, it's all hands on deck, then, then absolutely.
So they can go to Mount Comfort, too. It doesn't matter that they're from, how does that work?
Well, their primary is going to be right here in Fortville, on the Fortville campus.
We already have one down at Mount Comfort. It's part-time between McCordsville and Fortville.
I'm sorry.
Right now, in the last couple of weeks, I think we've added a second officer at the high school. He just served door seven, which is by the cafeteria with our afternoon kids going in and out.
Is the one at McCordsville and Mount Comfort, an SRO or just an officer?
He's an SRO.
Oh, okay, good. That's good. I think that's important for the schools because they have that school.
He's a retired officer.
Okay.
So and the plan is to hopefully put one at the high school, he's going to be our full-time person. He is going to be employed at Mount Vernon in town. And then hopefully put another one in the middle school. Those middle school hallways are packed, and we're getting ready at about 340 of the two.
Right.
But those hallways are so narrow.
Right.
Just because of the old, you know, the old buildings and stuff, we're going to need some help in that building.
Right. And I would like to clarify, I would like to clarify one thing. This, this officer will be a full-time employee of the Fortville Police Department. Not, not, not the school.
Not at Mount Vernon.
Right, not, not at Mount Vernon. But he will be assigned out here to the school.
So when we're on breaks, he goes back to the town.
Yes.
He's back out to us.
And he'll also be responsible for coordinating activities like basketball games, getting off, not, not that he will be responsible for being there himself.
Right, right.
After working a full day at the school.
Sure.
We'll get an officer out there to cover those games, the football games, the basketball games, or the proms, or things, things like that. PTO, meet with parents, as requested by the school, things of that nature. Not a disciplinarian. Not a disciplinarian.
He didn't want that.
And we don't want that.
Right, exactly. The school doesn't want that, and that would not be part of his job description or his role.
Very good. Very good. Thank you so much for your partnership with the district. As a mom sending my son, it's, it's nice to know that they're safe and secure.
We enjoy it. And, you know, school, school safety, obviously, right now is paramount. It's on everybody's mind. And we certainly want to be, be prepared for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, just real briefly, for the board situational awareness, under my report, I just wanted to bring you up to date on our biannual audit. We had the orientation meeting today with the auditors. Mrs. Walls, Dr. Long, and Mr. Smedley and I met with the auditors. And, you know, I have on the screen what it is. It's just, it's by Indiana code. We are audited every two years. We are, you know, the state is behind in their biennial audit. So this is the period, it's covering through June, June 30, 2016. You know, you'll see on there that one of the things they, they're looking for is our control systems and our risk assessment, and the way that we're doing things within the business office. So we're not sure how long that's going to last, but I'll keep you posted as they meet with us periodically and are asking for records. So just so you know, that is taking place right now. Any questions for me on that?
Do they just stay till they're done?
They just stay till they're done. Yeah, yeah. We gave them a room and a little, and a little cubby, and we're digging out files the best we can.
Be really nice to them.
Yeah.
Okay, here's the fund report as of the end of the month, February. As you can see, we're pretty much on target with our spending, except for our capital projects. We're a little bit over budget there through the first two months. However, we did discover, since we shared this out at the end of the month, that we did discover that there was about $122,000 purchased for networking equipment that should have gone to the Common School Loan Fund, not the general fund. So that will be reduced by $122,000. So that'll, that'll curb that, that percentage down quite a bit. So other than that, we feel very, really good about where we are at this point in the year with our spending, trying to keep it around roughly 8% per month. So as you can see, after two months, we're pretty much on target with, with every, every other fund other than the capital projects fund. But we've had a lot of projects taking place right now throughout the district that we're, that we're in the middle of completing. And that, you know, obviously takes, takes a lot of those dollars that we spend in that particular fund. So any questions about the fund report itself?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to hit this, or I can hit it?
We'll kind of tag you if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, but basically, there's a breakdown of our facility rental through the first couple of months. As you know, we opened up the PEC Center in January. We've had quite a bit of rental of that facility in addition to several of our basketball courts. Best Choice uses our facilities quite a bit. They've already scheduled many events this summer even as well. So this report kind of breaks down where we were at the point, March 1st. Since then, it's gone up a little bit as well. I think our, I just checked our ML Schedules Revenue Report today, and the total space rental revenue now is up to $90,000. And the additional charges has climbed up to a little over $16,000. So that inflates that revenue just a little bit more than what's reflected on this report, too.
So what we'll probably do, my guess is, in about two more months, then we'll start reducing that line by taking salaries out of that. So you get a true picture of what the, the actual, what the actual revenue is. Right now, we're not taking, really, taking expenses out of that. So.
Right, yeah. This is all revenue.
This is just all revenue right now.
Doesn't reflect any expenses at this point.
So you're just seeing pure revenue. So you want to see what our actual, you know, revenue is. The other thing is, is, do you know if the vending machines have come in yet?
I do not know.
They're on order, though, right?
Yeah, we've, we've submitted that purchase order, and I'm assuming if it's not in yet, it's on its way.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I know at some point, we had a total for what was spent. At some point, will we get a breakdown of where we are and what we spent, to what we've made? I mean, it should, at this rate, it's going to catch up pretty fast.
Yeah.
But I think I'd like to just see that. It doesn't have to be...
Probably if it's okay, I can, we'll give that to you at our summer board retreat. I didn't get my, I'm sorry, ladies, I didn't get my slide finished. No, no. Well, welcome.
All right, I am Jennifer Rowland.
And I'm Amanda Verbal.
We are both high school social studies teachers around Mount Vernon. And we are now taking another role on as the local coordinators for FLAG, which is our exchange program that we're going to use for our international program. We need host families for the 2018-2019 school year. And then beyond that, this isn't just a short-term, one-year thing, but something that we're looking to foster and grow. The program was created as a way to allow our students to participate and interact with the global world, while also sharing our culture with students who are looking for a new perspective and experience. So we're hoping for about 15 to 20 kids for next year, which is more than this year. So some will stay for one year, and then some will actually have the opportunity to stay for two years and actually graduate with a Mount Vernon degree, which is pretty amazing.
Our international students will come from all over the world, including countries like Denmark, Vietnam, Cambodia. These students are coming with the intention of becoming both a part of their host family, but also part of the Mount Vernon community, and then to have the experience of a lifetime. One of the benefits in hosting a student here at Mount Vernon is that Jennifer and I are in the building full-time. We will still maintain our full teaching schedule, but we will also be taking on the job of placing these students, but also maintaining at least one monthly contact with student and parents. So we're there full-time to solve any problems, or, you know, encouragement, or deal with any issues that are... any issues that are coming up. Both Jennifer and I have hosted exchange students. In fact, Jennifer is hosting a year-long student right now, Sophia, from Spain, and most days, it goes well. It's a teenager. I hosted a Spanish foreign exchange student in September, and then I'm actually hosting one of the German students that's coming in April. So I'm gonna have a teenage girl getting ready for prom. We're looking forward to that in my household.
She'll need all the prayer.
Yeah. But because of our firsthand experience in hosting international students, we bring invaluable knowledge and experience to this process, and we're really here to just ensure that both parties, the host family and the student, have a pleasant, smooth, positive experience.
Just some general things about why this might be interesting to you. There is zero compensation for hosting one of these kids. You're doing it because you want to have that experience. Sometimes you don't know you want to have that experience, and you inherit the experience, and it's not awful. It's, we like, it's good. But if you guys know someone who may be, or anyone who's here listening, or maybe watching, which is terrifying. There's a referral fee, or a referral bonus that's offered to anybody who refers someone, and they actually become a host family, it's $100. If you sit on the school board, or you're a teacher, or PTO, or in any way shape or form, have any sort of relationship with the school, there's a $300 stipend if you actually host a kiddo. Which, again, it doesn't account for a lot, but it's a little something beyond the nothing that the state department says you get. Again, we are both full-time at the high school. I'm Jennifer.Roland, she's Amanda.Rubel. If you know someone, please send their information our way. We have, I got, we got an email today that we have a kid who needs a home, and we have no homes, so. No dire need here, but, you know. We would take names. And we can even keep it so you're not thrown under the bus.
My family hosts three students.
Yes.
Over the course of time, and there are some tax benefits. I think there could be license stuff.
You can take $50 a month. There's a tax benefit of $50 a month.
It still doesn't overdo the cost of.
It doesn't, no.
But, what are we doing to recruit parents? I guess that would be one of my questions. Are we actively going out trying to?
Jennifer and I have attended junior parent night. We attended baseball trivia night. We will attend the little, every, every showing of The Little Mermaid. We are here. We are working with Ms. Vaughn to get some promotions out. We are going to be starting an Instagram and a Facebook page. We've reached out to local churches. We are planning to set up a table at the farmer's market, and then we're going to also be contacting anyone who's hosted a student.
Okay, that was a move that I recommend was.
To continue.
Especially if they have a positive experience.
You too. Yeah.
The German exchange students, my hope was that when they come, we have a dinner, all of us, was that I might be able to put in a little word, if you enjoy this, you know, take on a ear when it's just the same.
Totally the same thing.
So contacting them, the Spanish students, all of the year-long and semester-long students we've had, reaching out to all those parents, because we are streamlining our program. We've had several different exchange programs with kids in our building. We're now going with one, FLAG. And so, those parents that aren't FLAG would need to go through the application process and apply again through them, and so, we're trying.
Well, you're, you're exhausting, I think, every effort.
We are, we are. We were told we're very visible and persistent, so I'm gonna take that as a positive.
We're also visiting all the elementaries, and the middle school, and every organization that, like, I'm the Marauder Mob sponsor, and so.
Awesome.
I told my officers they are now required to host a foreign exchange. I'm not sure how that's gonna go.
Well, I know several of us are hosting a German student.
Very good.
And we're excited about that. And so, what, you get a parent, I get a student.
You get a teacher.
Yeah, we're really excited to have. In fact, my student emailed me just this evening, so we're excited about that. So.
Well, thanks, ladies, I appreciate it. Appreciate your support of the, you know, the international programming in general, and it's, it's people like you are gonna make it successful, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shipley?
Good evening. Dr. Robbins asked me to come speak a little bit about aerospace education and a little update. There's not a great deal to update with you with, but we have been working on it. Been talking a lot with Matt Medley from Ivy Tech in Columbus. Had a lot of conversations with him, trying to pair up the Ivy Tech courses for aerospace education and the high school courses, and how it would be a dual enrollment course. Dual enrollment meaning the instructor would be an Ivy Tech instructor, but working with our students. It looks like we, we are, we're on pace, we could, we could start the program in the fall and have students taking the courses. Ideally, we'd like to have the courses at Mount Comfort Airport, but there are some political situations with that, so it will be delayed a little bit, so it would be something in-house on, on our campus. Dr. Robbins has also been speaking with the other county schools a great deal, and talking with them about offering it up for their students. And so, you know, right now, we've been talking with Matt Medley from Ivy Tech about instructor possibilities, got a, a couple of possibilities that we've been looking into, and he's been looking into. And after spring break, our high school counselors are gonna be meeting with all students, verifying their, their schedules, their schedule requests, I should say. And in that process, we'll also be talking to them about the fact that the aerospace education's a possibility that was not before, and, and that we're, we're moving forward with that. So that's kind of what we're looking for here this spring, so.
That's awesome.
As a quick little update.
Would we partner with the other schools for it, like, like a?
So other, so other students, we have enough students that would be interested?
How would they, would they, can't think of the term, would they do it via computer, like a?
No.
They would come to campus.
Yeah, so.
Oh, would it actually be physically?
Right, so what we, that's one of them, well, two reasons why we wanted to mount Comfort. Number one is just the aesthetics of, you know, obviously, the programming at the airport. But the second is, is it's centrally located, so it'd be much easier. We think, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Shipley, but within a year, we think that land use agreement will be rectified.
Yes.
So we think this is just a one-year situation.
It may only just be a semester.
Yeah.
It just kind of depends how things.
Right.
Work out.
And, so what they will do is, they, this first year, we'll just, you know, do some schedule changes for kids that will have interest, which will be not a problem, you know, because you're not talking a large number of kids to get a section to go, and they'll, they'll send their kids here. Most, all of the districts that have students that attend vocational school anyway, their kids provide their own transportation. Right, right. And so that's where we are. And we all, actually, at my, at my breakfast last month, we extended the offer to the Shelby County Schools as well, so.
Is there like, do they have to have a prerequisite to take the course, or is it an introductory kind of thing? I'm just curious.
There are some engineering courses that lead up towards it, but it's not necessarily a prerequisite. I mean, obviously, there are some courses that put students into the, the mode of taking the, the aerospace education courses.
Very good.
Can I, can I give a little update about the counseling grant?
Oh, absolutely, please.
The Lilly Counseling Grant, round two, is due Thursday, so we've been working really hard, and as you've known, I, I told you last month that we were doing a joint effort with the other county, Hancock County Schools, and we've identified a, a few goals that we have, social, emotional, and college and career are a couple of our, our major goals, and, and modeling our counseling program after the ASCA model, American School Council Association Model. And I do have a letter for Shannon and Ms. Walls and Mrs. Smith to sign at the end of the board meeting, providing support for the counseling grant, so we add that to our application on Thursday.
Very good.
Okay?
Thanks, Mr. Shipley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the action items, do you want me to do the climate survey? Okay. As a school board, we've also, obviously, had a huge initiative that we want this to be a school district that parents want to send their students to. But we also want this to be a district that our employees want to come to work to as well. And so, we have talked for several months about conducting a climate survey in this school district, and I've worked with Michael Adamson with the Indiana School Board Association, and he's recommended two individuals, and I have sent you all the proposals for the two companies, and we have reviewed them. I'd like to recommend that we go with Dr. Baugh, who come, very highly recommended from Michael Adamson, to conduct our climate survey in May. I don't think we, we don't need board action on that, right? Okay. Anybody have any questions on the proposals, or?
No, based on reading the two proposals, that's definitely in line with what I was expecting us to do.
Okay, very good.
And when we do this, we're, we're making sure that this is coming, this will come from him, right? This will come?
Yes, they will administer the survey, collect the results, and then give the results to the board. And we hope that this is a tool that, you know, no matter what level you are in the administration, that you'll be able to use this. We'll be able to use this as a board, and we'll just have a really good handle on the climate, and then areas we need to improve, and we'll also know areas that we're doing really well here at Mount Vernon. So, it should be a great tool for us to use as a district.
So we'll have some input in terms of, like.
Yes.
Does this should be like all employees?
Yes, it will be certified and certified.
Okay.
Yes, and we will meet with Dr. Baugh to kind of have a preliminary meeting with the board. To design the survey, and then he will administer everything from that point forward, and then collect the results and bring them back to us.
Okay, because obviously, and obviously, in this survey, the more background information we collect, as in building, department, that helps us then slice the data so we can kind of.
Yeah. Michael Adamson has also given me a list of questions that he recommends to be a part of a climate survey, which is to do that, so I think it'll be a really, a good thing for us as a board.
That was a nice question, so he'll come with some sample ones maybe?
He will come with some samples, and then, and then we can add, edit to.
Make up ones?
We can add and edit and make it fitting for Mount Vernon schools.
Who's your favorite board member?
Right? Dr. Long, we've been working on board policy.
You know, we put this on the agenda now every month, and we had a great meeting, I think, earlier in the month, to talk about the policies that we have, not only to look at the new policies that need adjusted for the school corporation or implemented, but also look and go through every one of our existing policies. Shannon, or Ms. Walls, you might make some comments on that, excuse me, I'm sorry, I broke the code.
It's okay.
I got a nest.
No, I think that, as a, as a board, we obviously get our NEOLAs updates, and this is our second reading on the updates, and so tonight we'll take action on those, but we also, as a board, are literally going through every NEOLA policy, and how it relates to our school district, and editing what we need to make it work for Mount Vernon, and working through that. So we have about, we worked for three hours, I think, last week, on the first section of the policies, and we'll continue this process. It's gonna be several months of working through the policy, but we know that it needs to be done, and policy is what we live and die by. So, it needs to be done, and Dr. Long is, is doing a great job of leading us through that. He's very patient with us, and he's helping us out, so.
Actually, we have the dean of Indiana policy in the room tonight.
Oh, we do? I don't even know that.
We sure do. Lisa Tanzel has helped me for years, probably over 20 years, I don't know, but, yeah, she.
We're spending a lot of time on it.
She does, a lot of the policy interpretation and things for the ISBA, and she is excellent. And, you know, what I always learned when I was young in the business was you always had time, and that was if you had to wait and make a phone call to get a good bit of advice from the ISBA, she was great to call, so, nice to see you. And we are carrying the torch, and we are doing our policy. We have two areas of policy we want to talk about tonight. One are the federal updates from NEOLA, and those are on the second reading. That would be the definitions, parent participation in Title I programs, the homeless student statute, children and youth foster care, use of medications, approval of contracts, student records, authorization for audio, video, and digital recording, food service. Wellness is off our list, because that's a large committee that meets, and I talked to Doris, and they're gonna, so even though we're on first reading, we won't take that as a second reading, because it's not in your packet. And I think that's where we are right now, with the policies from NEOLA, from the update that you all had in your packet. As you saw, electronically, Dr. Robbins put those out electronically for your perusal, and then some had boxes to mark and check, and I did my very best to get the right ones for all of us. And then if you have looked at those, and you're in sync with those, and you want to approve all those at one time, that would be a great way to get started on our policy discussion tonight. If you have anything you would like to pull out of there, or look at a policy, I have them all with me, and we can certainly discuss those.
Okay, very good.
I just have a question before we.
We need a motion. This time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the second reading of the policies. Motion by Kelly, I have a second. Second by Beth. Any questions?
These are all ones that we're gonna go through when we, as we meet as a committee, we will look at these again at that time, right?
We sure will. Yep, they'll, they'll go into their, now, unless they're in one, in a back area that we haven't done yet. And what I would encourage the board to do, this, the way we broke the meeting was up new policies, review of existing policies, and then policies that you want to look, look at. It's almost like Jeopardy. There's three different categories, and so I think that's a healthy way to look at policy. If you have something, rather than just have a reaction to something that goes on, you see something that you think needs adjusted, let's get it, so we can review our current policy, look at other school districts' policies, then bring that back for an informed decision by the board.
Very good. I have a motion by Kelly, and a second by Beth. All those in favor, signal by raising your right hand. Motion carries.
Second part of our policy would be first reading of those policies that we already have, and these were all in the O100 category. Definitions, of course, we did tonight, so that is already adopted. But I sent you a list that Mrs. Neskes had put together, that takes every policy and what those proposed changes could be. I'm offering those tonight. That would be the 100, the 110, which is the official description, the 120, powers and philosophy, 130, which is functions, 140, which is membership, 150, which is organization, 160, meetings, and 170, duties.
I don't see 120.
120 is missing from the plan.
Hmm, we didn't have any changes in it.
Okay.
It's on this list.
We'll just change, we'll just.
Yeah, no changes, so nothing was noted.
So these are the policies that you and, and Mrs. Walls and Mr. McCarty sat down and.
Yes.
Made the recommendations on, okay?
Correct.
I know that because I've read them.
These were the proposed changes that we made to each one. I say proposed changes. What they are are just suggestions to bring to the board.
Okay.
Okay.
But they'll come back as the second reading for us to approve.
They will come back as a second reading, and then you can discuss those, and hopefully we'll have those approved next meeting. Correct.
Next month, we'll have a first reading on the policies that we meet on in April. So this will continue on every month.
Oh, yeah. Yay!
Yay!
You guys probably want to come back every month.
Yeah, and nine months from now.
We will be completed.
And we can move slower or faster than what you want, so, I mean, if we get through a lot.
I don't think we can move slow.
Wow, I almost forgot, he had me so enthralled. No, I, I did, I had one, um, and do you have the reference of what it is, the number? There is, um, and I, I've probably sent it out to you, um.
Sixty-six, maybe?
Let me look to make sure, I want to reference it. I received a, um, a notice tonight, and, so what I would ask you to do is look for an email from me, but it's, um, it's an opt-out versus, I won't put you on the spot. It, it's an opt-out versus opt-in, I think it's sixty-five, is it sixty-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's, um, Senate Bill sixty-five, and so what it is, as a twenty-five-year health educator, um, it's whether, um, our students need to opt-out versus opt-in, and so, um, the ISBA strongly sup, supports the fact that they would need to opt-out. There's been change, um, just as of today, that now it would be they need to opt-in. So the ISBA is encouraging you to contact, um, your legislators.
So, I'm sorry, opting in to what?
The, the actual education of that, of health education.
Okay.
So, and, and I'm not gonna go through the whole narrative of it, I'll send you the language, uh, but we don't want them to have to opt-in, we want them to opt-out. So, um, that's not good for us, we'll, we'll lose that ability, and what I would tell you is, no, it's not, um, it, it's a specific component of it, I'm just not gonna address